Good evening and welcome to the November twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-two work session of the Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we have three discussion topics, but before we get to them, then there are going to be committee updates. I wanted to make a couple of brief announcements first. I hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving. And that sort of segues into my thank you. I hope that this pattern stops, that like at each week, we are, we have some news event that puts Gaithersburg on the map nationally. That's a bad, it's generally bad news. Last night, obviously, last week, we had the explosion of Potomac Oaks. Last night, we had this plane crash, thankfully. Miraculously, there were no one, there was no one killed from that because that could have easily happened. But I wanted to take an opportunity, as we're thinking about Thanksgiving, to thank all of the first responders from Montgomery County, from Fire and Rescue Police, Health and Human Services. We got a, we got a real glimpse of how, of the good work that they do in Gaithersburg, coming out of Potomac Oaks. And they did it again last night. I mean, they're just doing terrific work. We're very lucky to have them. So thanks for that. Another thank you. This is on, on the good news side. Our Quince Orchard Cougars have made it to the state championship. And that game will be against Prince George's County High School, C.H. Flowers, on Thursday night, seven P.M. at Navy Stadium. And we'll look forward to, to seeing the community there. I will certainly be there and, and hope that, hope to see a lot of the community supporting Quince Orchard. And last, getting back to the melancholy side, our, I wanted to, to call everyone's attention to our city attorney Lynn Board, whose mom passed away last week. And there will be a funeral on Thursday that I know some of us will attend. And so let's just have one quick moment of silence for Lynn's mom and we'll get started. This is on, on the, the good news side. Our Quince Orchard Cougars have made it to the state championship. And that game will be against Prince George's County High School, C.H. Flowers, on Thursday night, seven P.M. at Navy Stadium. And we'll look forward to, to seeing the community there. I will certainly be there and, and hope that, hope to see a lot of the community supporting Quince Orchard. And last, getting back to the melancholy side, our, I wanted to, to call everyone's attention to our city attorney Lynn Board, whose mom passed away last week. And there will be a funeral on Thursday that I know some of us will attend. And so let's just have one quick moment of silence for Lynn's mom and we'll get started. Thank you all very much. So as I alluded to, we have three committee briefings tonight, first for multicultural affairs. Then we'll go to the Culture Arts Advisory Committee, and then we'll go to G Park. So we're starting with Dorothy Winder from our Parks and Rec Department and Anita Cox from our Multicultural Affairs Committee. And we look forward to your presentation. Take it away.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Ashman, council members, Ms. Riley and Ms. Ford. My name is Anita Pombara Cox and I'm the Chair of the Multicultural Affairs Committee. I joined the Multicultural Affairs Committee, or MAC, as we call it, in May of two thousand and twenty-one as a way to utilize my educational knowledge, my international experiences, and my multilingual abilities to support the well-being of city residents. I'm excited about leading MAC. I'm the newest member of MAC. Because my passion lies in seeing that people are represented through programs that both elevate everyone and encourage a sense of belonging. I came to Montgomery County from Uganda by way of England in two thousand and four. And I have been fortunate enough to travel the world, both with my career and my husband's diplomatic work for the State Department, living in many countries such as Argentina, Sierra Leone, Egypt, India, the Bahamas, and a few others. With each home, I immersed myself in the culture, learned the language, and became an active member of my new community. So for the past seventeen years, I've done no different here in Gaithersburg. I've been a homemaker and for about thirteen years, about thirteen years ago, I founded a nonprofit to support my native Uganda. It's called the Pombara Cox Foundation. And it builds bridges between Africa and the United States through programs that enrich children and support women and education. I volunteer my time to run my foundation, just as I volunteer here for the MAC. And I'm delighted to be here tonight to update you on the accomplishments and activities of the past year. Slide two. So our mission statement, as I'm sure you're all aware, is to enrich our city through the promotion of, through the promotion of understanding, respect, and appreciation of the many cultures of Gaithersburg. While cultural and ethnic diversity affects people in many aspects of their lives, the committee's objective is to heighten awareness of cultural similarities and differences in order to improve interactions. So for over thirty-three years, MAC has been dedicated to creating an environment of tolerance and acceptance by presenting opportunities that both educate and celebrate our cities' global communities. Through these programs, MAC helps to build bridges between neighbors who often come from vastly different worlds. As a committee, MAC has worked to increase the community's awareness of others by exposing them to cultures and experiences often different from their own. I can't say enough about the power of this small but yet formidable committee. As you will hear, we have a good balance of experience to new members. This past year, we worked on affirming our mission and recently added vice chair positions to allow us to focus more on the areas of heritage, membership, and education. So to introduce our committee members, as you will see, we have Washington Sangu, who's been a member for sixteen years. He is our vice chair of membership and is currently working with staff to recruit new members because we have a few vacancies on that. Washington is originally from Cameroon. We have Samira Hussain, has been a member since two thousand and eight, and is our vice chair of heritage. Samira assists in identifying proclamation recipients. And she's Palestinian-American. She's lived in Gaithersburg for over thirty years. We have Debang Lau, recently renewed his membership, and he's been involved with MAC for three years. He lives in Gaithersburg and is originally from China. Then we have Israel Isaiah, who joined MAC in two thousand and twenty-one. And he brings a wealth of understanding and acceptance from his previous positions as an assistant pastor of Outreach Missionary Baptist Church in Grove Heights, Illinois. Finally, I want to acknowledge Maria Spray, who was a member with us through November. Maria is the Anthropology Coordinator at Montgomery College and a first-generation American. She's resigning from the MAC to pursue several exciting projects to do with her Ph.D., tracing and interpreting the history and experiences of immigrants to Maryland. We're sorry to see Maria go, but we look forward to learning more about her research. As an overview, now that you've met the team, let me tell you what we do and have done. We work closely with program coordinators and facility managers of Parks, Recreation, and Culture Department to celebrate the customs, values, and tradition of the diverse citizens of our community. As I mentioned, MAC is instrumental in identifying proclamation recipients for Heritage Month. But we work with staff to develop educational displays that are presented at the Activity Center. We also provide resources and help programmers incorporate and recognize cultural tradition into special events, including the Gaithersburg Book Festival, the Labor Day Parade, and the Jingle Jubilee that's coming up later this week. Our programmers argument MAC's efforts with targeted programs such as art exhibitions at the Activity Center, theater, music, films, at the Arts Barn, and Benjamin Gaither Center, cooking classes at the Casey Community Center, and cultural programs at the Community Museum. So this past year, we've recognized the rich diversity of Gaithersburg by acknowledging five Heritage Months. We've done Black History Month. We've done the Arab-American Month. We've done the Asian-American and Pacific Islander Month. We've done the Caribbean Month, Native American Month, and the Hispanic Month. So starting at the top of the year, in February, MAC, MAC celebrated Black History Month and nominated Gregory Plummer, the owner of Plum's Hair Gallery in Old Town, to receive the proclamation. Black-owned barber shops are more than just places to shave and have a haircut. They're community gathering places where people discuss events of the day, swap stories, and catch up. So barber shops are also an avenue for African-American men to become entrepreneurs. Mr. Plummer has operated his shop in Old Town since nineteen eighty-eight and for the past thirty-five years has been a barber school instructor, where he's been instrumental in countless graduates establishing their own shops. He also supports the community by giving free haircuts to children entering school for the very first time. And he offers discounted haircuts to incarcerated individuals at the Seven Lox and Clarksburg Correctional Facilities. MAC collaborated with MAC staff liaisons and the Community Museum staff to reach and design an exhibit that depicted the journey of Black Americans historically until today. The educational display title, Did You Know or Were You Told, was viewed by almost five thousand people, including three school groups. PRC staff augmented this celebration with programs suited for all ages, including the Community Museum, the Casey Community Center, and the Arts Barn, held a Storytime Program focused on traditional African-American folktales, Black heroes, heroines, musicians. The Benjamin Gaither Center offered a virtual original documentary, Uncloaked, that was produced by Robert Williams, who is a BGC staff member. And the Casey Community Center had a family movie night where they viewed Pixar's Saw. And the Community Museum kicked off the Gaithersburg History Project that will tell the stories and history of our city's diverse residents over the next five years. The first part of the project is dedicated to documenting history and the achievement of Black Gaithersburg. For the Arab-American Month, we worked with staff liaisons to locate Arab-American artists to prepare an exhibition that used the power of art to illustrate experiences and to inspire personal connections with our Arab neighbors. The exhibit was on display at the Activity Center over Ramadan and was visited by forty-six thousand people. You all proclaimed April twenty twenty-two as Arab Heritage Month, Arab-American Heritage Month. The proclamation recipient was one of the artists from the exhibit, Arwa El Borai. Arwa serves as the Middle Eastern liaison in the Office of Community Partnerships, Montgomery County Community Engagement Center. She supports the partnership by strengthening relationships between Montgomery County Government and the Middle Eastern American residents, with special focus on underserved and emerging communities. Additionally, Arwa is an artist herself, and her work depicts the endless beauty of the Arab culture. During April, the Benjamin Gaither Center invited members and visitors to learn about iftar, the evening meal with which Muslims end their daily Ramadan fast. As you can see in the photo, Samira Hussain was one of the invited guests, and she shared a customary dessert and spoke about Arab customs. In May, MAC helped the city celebrate Asian-American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. The month began with a proclamation presentation to Jay Sun, the honorary president of Coordination Council of the Chinese-American Association, which is the largest nonprofit Chinese organization in the DMV area. He leads the executive team that coordinates many major events in the metro, in the metro area and is credited with creating a successful model of cross-cultural cooperation led by the Chinese-American community. This year, every member of MAC participated in the multicultural Storytime Tent at the Gaithersburg Book Festival. MAC members introduced the Asian authors, facilitated the Q and A between the authors and the young audience member, and escorted the authors to the signing area. As you can see, Israel and the authors Francis and Ginger Parks formed an immediate bond. The sisters later tweeted about their wonderful experience and their fabulous introduction and introduced, and invited us, the MAC members, to visit them in their chocolate shop in Washington, D.C. We haven't yet taken them up on it, but we will. In celebration of Asian-American Pacific Islander Day, the Arts Barn offered a workshop on the art of kalam, which is a geometrical line drawing used for ceremonial design during traditional Indian festivities. The Benjamin Gaither Center viewed Dreaming of Words, which was a documentary film about Nijay Taylor Shreed Haran's dictionary, connecting four major languages mostly spoken in southern India and northeastern Sri Lanka. And the Activity Center gallery showcased artwork by Asian-American artists in the Harmonious Art Group's Twenty-Second Annual Exhibition. In June, MAC recognized Caribbean Heritage Month with a proclamation. The Caribbean region of course includes thirteen countries and a dozen territories, including Cuba, Haiti, Dominican Republic, Jamaica, Trinidad and Tobago, and MAC nominated Joan Beckford, owner of Gaithersburg Island's Pride's Oasis Restaurant and Catering, as proclamation recipient. Island Pride's Oasis Restaurant brings the delicious flavors of the Caribbean to Gaithersburg. The Benjamin Gaither Center celebrated Caribbean Heritage Month with a steel pan jam performance and the tastings of traditional desserts and drinks. Hispanic Heritage Month, which is probably the biggest one, was recognized with a proclamation designating September fifteenth through October fifteen, two thousand and twenty-two, as Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Gaithersburg. The proclamation was received by Maria Helena Malagon. Señora Malagon is MAC member Maria Spray, our former member's mother, and she's the only child of Spanish Civil War refugees. She was born in the Dominican Republic and spent her childhood in Mexico, New York, and Washington, D.C. Señora Malagon was one of the first ESOL teachers in Montgomery County Public Schools and was selected to be the Director of the Division of ESOL and Bilingual Programs. She served on numerous local, state, and national committees advocating for English-language learners before her retirement. MAC staff liaisons in this capacity also worked with Emily Eason, a University of Maryland scholar and the Community Museum, to prepare a Hispanic Heritage Month educational display depicting the stories of the one-point-five, that's one-point-five-generation Latinx immigrants in Gaithersburg. One-point-five G are known basically by that sort of number and a fraction because of the fact that their parents immigrate without them, leave them back in their home countries, but then they join their parents later on, and oftentimes, they struggle to assimilate and create a new life. The majority of these students in Gaithersburg are from Guatemala, Honduras, and El Salvador. The display included panels in English and in Spanish, and city staff members provided these wonderful photos of their families, relatives, and friends. The presentation was seen by over ten thousand visitors to the Activity Center. Many people did comment on the resilience of the one-point-five G as they mature, gain citizenship, and give back to the city of Gaithersburg. Other programs throughout the city included an evening in Old Town, an evenings in Old Town Concert, an exhibition of art by Latino artists at the Activity Center, a Hispanic Heritage Festival at BGC, and much more. MAC nominated Gaithersburg resident Milo Booth very recently to receive the Native American Heritage Month proclamation. Milo is a Simchian, member of the Metlakatlak Indian community in southeastern Alaska. Milo is a National Tribal Affairs Advisor at the Department of Homeland Security at the moment. And he often visits classrooms in and around the area, especially at his children's schools, to talk about his heritage. MAC staff liaisons prepared an educational display for the lobby of the Activity Center in collaboration with members of the Sugarloaf Regional Trail, a local nonprofit, and the Montgomery College Anthropology Department. Our little plug with Maria there. The display, which traces the story of Native Americans in Maryland and especially our area, will be in the Activity Center through the end of this month. With MAC, the Community Museum collaborated with the Maryland Commission of Indian Affairs and the Archaeology Society of Maryland to create an exhibition of artifacts that will be on display until November thirtieth. The Archaeological Society incorporated artifacts provided by Mr. Booth in this particular exhibit. So now for the penultimate slide, to tell you about the special events we've had outside of our Heritage Months. We've mostly focused on broadening understanding of all people basically all year long. And as I mentioned, we had the multicultural Storytime Tent at the book festival. Some members introduced authors, while others read stories and our cultures, about our cultures and homelands. I read one of my children's favorite books, Dr. Disotto Goes to Africa, which my children actually knew by heart, word for word. Maria Spray and her mother shared stories of the Festival of Saint Jorge, a celebration from the Catalonia region of Spain. The Festival of Saint Jordi combines a celebration of World Book Day and Valentine's Day. So on this day, it's a custom for couples to exchange gifts. So here we go. Men receive a book and women receive a rose. And Maria's mother brought roses to share with all the children that, you know, attended the tent. It was really a great connection to see the culture that she brought kind of mixed in with the book festival. Next week, MAC will be participating in the Jingle Jubilee. We assisted with identifying diverse talent to perform on the stage and contributed ideas for the winter holiday tents and decorations. Jingle Jubilee is Saturday, December third, so this Saturday, and we really hope to see you there. And that's really it in terms of what we've done. Thank you for letting me share our year in review. And now, let me tell you a little bit about the goals we have for two thousand and twenty-three. We have four goals. The first is to expand the membership and include a broader range of cultural representation. The second is to continue to support the city's efforts to infuse diversity into city programs. And then we hope to continue also to provide programming on the rich cultural diversity of Gaithersburg. And lastly, we'd like to continue to partner with city committees, parks, recreation and culture, and outside organizations and groups to develop and provide inclusive programs, reach more community members, and promote understanding, respect, and appreciation of the many cultures that call Gaithersburg home. So thank you, Grazie, Dankeschön, or what else they put up there. And we welcome any questions that you might have for the committee.
Thank you so much, Anita. Great presentation, Dorothy. Appreciate your help in putting this together. I feel like tonight, the thread that's connecting all, I'm assuming, we'll be connecting all of the presentations is, it's about who we are. It's about who we are as a community. It's about how we express who we are. It's about how we understand who we are. I, we've had the Multicultural Affairs Committee for as long as I can remember. It probably predates me being elected in two thousand and seven. I don't, I don't remember when the committee was founded, but it was a, it was a, it was a really good idea, given who we are. I mean, we are, as everyone knows and, and says all the time, one of the, if not the most, one of the most diverse cities in the United States, and it's something that we're extremely proud of. And if we weren't, it would be remiss not to be doing things to take, to promote this, to celebrate this, to bring cultures to everyone's, you know, different cultures to everyone's attention. I want to say that, you know, obviously, I was at the book festival, but I was, I was floating around. So I didn't see a lot of what you were describing, but it makes me so happy to hear about that programming. That really sounds amazing. And, and I appreciate it, and I know our committee appreciates it. So I guess I have one question, and I'll turn it over to council members. How can we better assist you and your colleagues in the committee? Is there any, and think about it. I mean, if, if you have a great answer, give it, give it to, give it to us now. If not, feel free to give it to us later.
Now, I can tell you that my most, I've only been chair since May. And I can tell you that probably the thing that is the most pressing for me is to recruit more members.
Yes.
I feel like having a more robust membership, we're a fantastic team, we're small, we do what we do. But I feel like to expand our reach, maybe reach more communities, it would be really great if you could assist us with maybe our recruitment efforts, efforts, and to just, the more we get, I think, the more we reach.
Absolutely. I actually had caught that from, because you alluded to it a couple of times in the presentation. I had made a note. But yeah, we should all put out on social and to, through our networks that there's a need for more people on this committee. So appreciate that. Anybody else? We'll go to Neil, we'll go to Rob, then we'll go to this side.
So I know you're busy and you have a lot going on, but I'm going to throw another idea at you that related to something that has been a challenge, I think, for a long time, which is, so you're doing a great job in creating all these events focusing on exposing everybody to these different communities that we have. So first, I'm going to start with a question, which may make everything else moot, which is, when we do these events, do we get a large turnout from that community, the one that it's focused on? In other words, if you, do you get a lot of Hispanic people coming to the Hispanic Heritage Events? I would assume you do, but.
I think we do get a lot of people from that singular community with which the Heritage Month is focused on. But what I'd like to see, since we're about promoting respect and understanding, is to see perhaps more cultures coming to different cultures. So that, you know, that mutual exchange or understanding and respect is built if you're in the same room at the same time, seeing something that perhaps is a little bit different from your own culture.
Right.
Can I let Dorothy maybe add to that?
Well, I, I just want to just dive right in because I appreciate that's a great goal, and that's what we've been doing a lot of. But we've been trying to figure out how to reach out and build more bridges between the city government and the different communities of people that are here, because a lot of times at council meetings, we see the same, same old faces. And so perhaps we can think about ways to get information made available at these various events of the various services that the city provides, maybe even in other languages. So, I mean, we provide financial empowerment, we provide an economic development toolbox, we provide rent assistance and help, and we provide all these services. I'm not convinced that that many people, and especially new immigrants, are aware of the many things that we offer. So if you can think about, if there's a way, especially if we're doing something at the Activity Center, if we could have some ancillary benefits come out of it, I think that would be very valuable to us, if it makes sense.
I think it does.
You just pushed, pushed a button in a good way for me, so thank you.
Thanks, Neil. We'll go to Rob.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Anita, for the presentation. And Dorothy, thank you for everything you do. You know, I'll echo what the mayor said in that I, I think that this committee, no, and other committees, but this committee in particular is something that espouses we hold dear here in the city, which is our diversity and our embracement of that diversity. And so looking at your presentation, it's a fabulous presentation because it encapsulates all of the immense things that you do. And so, you know, we do the proclamations. We attend some of the events. We get all the newsletters and things like that. But this really shows me and encapsulates for me, you know, I think for the first time that I've seen the breadth that the committee has been integrating into the various facets of the city. And that's a kudos to staff as well, because it looks like there's an integration of the cultural element into all that we're doing in outreach in the community. I think that's fabulous. Do you have one question? You know, historically, we've had a few bigger-ticket presentations going on in the city, diversity showcase, which, you know, understandably went away due to, you know, intervening circumstances over the past few years. CCACC has also done a Lunar New Year, Chinese New Year festivity at Lake Forest Mall. Kind of what Neil is getting at is, you know, we've got a lot of stuff that, that we've sponsored and that other community stakeholders have sponsored. sponsored and that other community stakeholders have sponsored. El Salvadorian Independence Day celebrated at, at the, at the, the fairgrounds. I know because they play really loud music that I can hear from my house, and everybody in my community says, what's the loud music going on, because they know I'm involved in the city, and I have to answer that question. You know, perhaps there's a way to, one, reinvigorate Diversity Showcase, which I think is a fabulous event. I don't know if we've got the bandwidth to do that. Two, doing outreach to these other wonderful cultural activities that go on in the city, where, you know, it's not a heavy lift for us, but we can integrate into them to, to kind of engage those communities, I think would be good, again, if you've got the bandwidth. But, you know, this, this presentation shows all the fabulous work you're doing, so kudos. Also, one thing, just came back from Japan, speaking of diversity and culture, I brought cookies from Japan. So if anybody wants some cookies from Japan, they're sitting over there. Otherwise, I'm going to be eating them tonight, so enjoy.
I'll help you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Jim?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a whole lot to add. I absolutely agree with the, the mayor, with Rob, with, with Neil. Thank you so much for the presentation. Like wraps up, we read the proclamations, and, but when you see them all together, you realize just how much we're doing. And, you know, it's a very important and very visible role that this committee plays, reflecting the diversity that makes Gaithersburg such a unique place. And, you know, to, to Neil's point, the more that we can do to reach out to those committees, when I was at the School Board for St. Martin's, and we have a very diverse school, that was one of the challenges that we had, is just getting information out to the different cultures and the different languages, and hearing back. I think that's been one of the challenges also. People that work different shifts, that aren't available to come to meetings, I think that's a really important idea. And I think there might be other opportunities for maybe some cross-committee integration. I know when I was on the Old Town Committee, we would have joint meetings with the CAAC, and, you know, maybe there's some opportunities there for MAC to, to interface with some of the other committees as well, just to get, you know, people who are already leaning in to, you know, be advocates and emissaries for the great work that your committee's doing too. So thank you for, for your involvement, thank you to the entire committee, Dorothy, thank you to you. It's always wonderful to attend these. I'm glad we're seeing more and more of these in-person events, and look forward to all the great things we're going to do in 23.
Thank you.
Lisa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Anita and Dorothy, thank you always for this incredible presentation. I'm proud to sit here in front of a Ugandan with a British accent, and I love that level of diversity, thank you. This presentation is chock full of goodness in terms of what, what our city is. It is a, a visible presentation of what Gaithersburg is. So thank you for presenting, presenting it. I understand that the call for help with, just from this presentation, that you need more committee members. So thank you for tasking the council members to do that, the mayor and the council members to do that, and we will, we'll move forward with getting that done. I look forward to the, the Jingle Jubilee. That is fantastic, so I'm looking forward, and I can't wait to see what you guys are, are presenting this year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs.
It's kind of funny, because this is now, this will be your second Jingle Jubilee as elected officials. We're getting to that point now.
We are, right.
You know, yeah, looking forward, it's a great event. So is there anybody here who wants to ask a question or add a comment to this presentation? Not, I'm just, I'm going to, yeah, come on up, Shelley.
I'm joined.
Yes. The people watching on TV have to hear you. There are dozens. I'm just kidding, there are probably tens.
Just wanted to say thank you so much to Dorothy and Anita, but we recognize that we are not necessarily meeting people where they are, especially our new immigrant population. So we have an education committee at PRC, and we've reached out to Identity, which
PRC being Parks Recreation.
Parks Recreation and Culture.
Thank you.
And we've reached out to Identity, which actually serves the new immigrant community. And we will, we are starting this week to work with them to develop some cultural competency programs for next January for all of the PRC staff, so we can begin to understand how to make those connections. You know, you can advertise in El Tiempo and some of the other Spanish-speaking newspapers, but that's only for people who actually are literate in their own language, and we don't have necessarily, all, all of our folks are not necessarily literate. So we have recognized that we're doing great stuff, we have terrific partners who come and do great stuff with us, but we still need to do more, and we are starting that process.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley. So I want to, if there's, if there's anybody on Zoom who'd like to make a comment, just use the Zoom raise hand function. Going once, going twice, okay. All right, for now, Anita and Dorothy, you guys are off the hook, but we, we, it was a terrific presentation. Anita, thank you so much for taking the leadership role in the committee. It's, it is a very special, important committee to us, and we, we really appreciate that. And we will see you on Saturday.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for hearing us and your comments.
All right. Next, I'm going to invite Shelley Williams back to the, to the table here, and John Moragello, who is the Chair of our Cultural Arts Advisory Committee, and we're going to hear that presentation.
Just about.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Ashman, council members, and Ms. Brierley and Mr. Johnson. My name is John Moragello, I am the Chair of the Gaithersburg Cultural Arts Advisory Committee, or CAAC. I am also the President and Artistic Director of Best Medicine Rep, a nonprofit professional theater company which operates from a storefront at Lake Forest Mall. I'm delighted to be here tonight to update you on the accomplishments and activities of the CAAC. The CAAC is comprised of nine members who are drawn from the community and represent a range of cultural arts, interests, and experiences. The CAAC is charged with reviewing and advocating for objectives stated in the Cultural Arts Section of the PRC Element of the City Master Plan, providing guidance on the city's cultural arts facilities and advising on programs, including public art. It is the mission of the CAAC to advise the mayor, council, and city staff on cultural programs and facilities, to enhance the quality of life in Gaithersburg, to develop and support opportunities that allow artistic expression and creative excellence to flourish, and to reflect the city's pride and commitment to the diversity and inclusion of its people. I am pleased to share with you CAAC's involvement over the past year. Tonight, I will summarize the activities of the Art in Public Places Program, the city's robust gallery program, how CAAC members use their expertise, and the results of the Cultural Arts Master Plan report card. The Art in Public Places Team, including members of the CAAC, have been busy this year with community engagement projects, the Gateway Project at I-370 and Route 355, selection of artworks for the city's newest facility, advising developers, and maximizing external funding to protect the city's considerable investment in public art. In 2020, with the approval of this august body, the Public Art Program established a goal of involving community members across the city in projects that would be diverse, equitable, inclusive, and accessible. This year, staff with the participation of CAAC members were finally able to realize that goal. With a $5,000 Maryland State Arts Council grant, staff launched a community engagement process to develop a mural concept for the Father Cuddy Bridge Underpass. Local artist Daniel Katz Hernandez worked with youth from the Old Town Youth Center and seniors from the Benjamin Gaither Center to develop the mural's imagery. The project, which includes six panels spelling out Gaithersburg, features the diverse and multi-general citizens of our city, staff, spelling, excuse me, of our city. Staff are waiting for final approval from MSHA to finish the project. Another similar project was the creation of artwork for the Diamond Farms Skate Spot. Residents living near the skate spot participated in Zoom meetings with youth artists from Arts on the Block, providing suggestions on everything from concepts to color palettes. A team of 12 youth, including several from Gaithersburg, spent a week in July painting the mural and installing mosaics. Feedback has been very positive, and skaters are back at it, grinding, sliding, and shredding. The last project is the Borner Morris Park Trail Markers, created by regional artist Karine Karoga and students at Gaitherburg Middle School. This project was a collaboration with G-Park members who selected the parks and linkages to learning, a prevention and intervention initiative for at-risk youth and families, many who are new immigrants and English-language learners. You can see from this photo on the right that despite challenges, the students bonded and made incredible art. The freestanding sculptural panels will be installed in spring of 2023. After presentations by two finalist public art firms, the review panel for the Gateway Number One project, including city staff, CAAC members, and arts professionals, selected the design concept you see here, created by Vicky Scori, a nationally-known public artist. Vicky's vision includes elements that relate to the city's history, its natural and built environment, and its people. The Gateway Number One concept and preferred location are currently under evaluation by Another big undertaking this year was the Phase One development of a collection of nine two-dimensional artworks for the new municipal building at 16 South Summit Avenue. The diverse collection, titled This is Gaithersburg, was selected by a panel of reviewers, including CAAC members and city staff. This powerful exhibit will greet visitors when they enter the main lobby. Further, it will visually demonstrate the first outcome of the city's new strategic plan, that all members of the community feel safe, welcome, and engaged. CAAC members played a key role in evaluating a public art concept for the new Metan Company's Bioscience Campus on Route 355. The CAAC reviewed the initial artwork, a corporate-style sculpture by a California artist, and recommended rethinking the design to have a sense of place and to be a reflection of Gaithersburg, its people, its places, and its significance. Metan took that advice and brought on a new artist, a Gaithersburg native, whose imagery recalls the city's history in combination with its biotech present. The developer also contracted with Arts on the Block to create ground mosaics featuring Maryland's flora and fauna. Fauna. In, thank you, I'm originally from New York, that's why that accent. In fiscal year 2022, public arts staff initiated a program to assess 10 art installations owned by the city and to address maintenance and repair issues. This year, the city received a $5,000 conservation grant from Maryland State Arts Council to further this work and to develop a maintenance, policies, and procedures manual. Wellman Conservation LLC is currently under contract to complete this work and will present a report by the end of this calendar year. The city's art galleries have grown in the past year to four rotating galleries, showing some 200 to 350 visual artists annually. Diversity, equity, inclusion, and access are key values of this program. Open calls to artists are broadly promoted. Exhibiting artists range from emerging and newcomer artists to highly experienced professionals. Two additional galleries will be added when 16 South Summit Avenue opens. You've already heard some of the ways CAAC members provide guidance on the city's cultural arts programs, but as you can see in this slide, CAAC members put their expertise to work in many ways for the city. Another way CAAC serves the city is to ensure arts and culture programs are meeting the objectives of the Cultural Arts Section of the Master Plan. Thus far, the CAAC has examined five of the 11 objectives, and I'm happy to say that the city staff have received an A+ thus far. It's safe to say that the city of Gaithersburg has a vibrant arts community. This is evident in the visual and performing arts found in city parades, observances, special events, and of course, at our premier arts facilities, the Arts Barn and the Kentlands Mansion. For the past 13 years, the city of Gaithersburg has coordinated one of the Mid-Atlantic Region's best-loved literary festivals and successfully met Objective Two. Last year, the Gaithersburg Book Festival was enjoyed in person by an estimated 18,500 book lovers and one famous dog, a golden retriever named Daniel. The Gaithersburg Community Museum oversees the preservation and interpretation of the city's past and present with programs at History Park and National Latitude Observatory Park. This year, the museum cooked off a five-year initiative called the Gaithersburg History Project to research and present the stories of our city's diverse community through public programs, exhibitions, and multimedia experiences. CAAC members also gave the city staff and their cultural partners an A+ for their efforts to celebrate the diversity of Gaithersburg, on Slides Five and 11. The slide illustrates how programmers across parks, recreation, and culture collaborate to showcase history, traditions, and the visual-performing literary and film arts of our global citizens during the Heritage Months and all year long. Looking forward, the CAAC has five strategic goals for 2023. Number one, support city equity initiatives from recruiting diverse committee members to ensuring equity in the public art program and other arts and cultural programs. Two, guide the Art in Public Places Program. Three, liaise with G-Park and other city committees to expand outreach and service. Four, to be the city's eyes and ears in the community to report on arts and cultural trends, needs, and opportunities. And to finish evaluating the remaining six cultural arts objectives of the Master Plan, which will include going back to Objective One, Action Two. A, establish a large multipurpose performing arts center that can accommodate touring performances and includes education, exhibition, and meeting spaces. Or B, establish a mid-sized venue of approximately 250 seats. At the November 17th CAAC meeting, the committee discussed the preliminary drawings for the Lake Forest Mall redevelopment project that were informally presented by WRS, which I attended on October 20th. This redevelopment project is a very exciting opportunity for the city, and the CAAC would like to be involved in it to ensure that the city's commitment to art is reflected in the project's design, architecture, and overall public experience. Two items came up in our CAAC discussions. Number one, while there is no mention of public art in the current Lake Forest Mall Master Plan, CAAC would respectfully ask that a commitment to public art be required of the developers moving forward. Number two, in addition, we would direct your attention to Section Six of the Lake Forest Mall Master Plan, the section on amenities, which reads, "A primary goal of the Lake Forest Mall redevelopment is to provide ample amenity space for residents and visitors. And in order to be successful and provide the greatest benefit, amenity spaces in a Lake Forest Mall redevelopment should not be an afterthought, but should be treated as an essential component of the overall development. As we currently understand the redevelopment plans, the amenity spaces offered are a bus stop, a pair of existing stormwater management ponds, and perhaps a public pool." As the city's advisors for arts and cultural programming, the CAAC requests the consideration of a broader range of civ, of civic facility uses, such as a multi-use community venue, including gallery space, educational space, and an indoor performance or black box space. Page 56 of the Lake Forest Master Plan states that "any civic facility should be designed to allow flexibility in programming and be usable all year round." Again, we are happy to speak in more detail about these ideas at a later time. In closing, thank you for the opportunity to provide a briefing on the CAAC's activities of the past year. As Mayor Ashman stated at last year's briefing, the CAAC enriches the community and makes Gaithersburg more than a collection of just streets and addresses. We truly appreciate the council's continued support for arts and culture in our community, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, John. Well-stated, as always. So I'm going to start with the, first, let me congratulate you on the presentation and thank your, you know, through you, thank your colleagues on the committee for all the work that they do in all these different areas. And I want to recognize Linda Bloom here, who's here too, who runs the Arts Barn. I happen, I actually, this is kind of an aside, but I happen- I happened, I actually, this is kind of an aside, but I happened to be walking through Kentlands this weekend and stopped by the Arts Barn, and there was a, there was a show going on with some local artists, and it, you know, I was just so impressed by, just like randomly, I came there and there was, there was some great stuff going on. So, so, you know, kudos to you guys for continuing that and for growing our arts footprint. You know, I really, it's, I really strongly support it myself, and I know, I know my colleagues agree. This is actually a good time to bring up Lake Forest, not because we're, this, the, what facility would be part of a redevelopment is before us yet, but an application has been filed, so we can't, the only way we can speak about Lake Forest is in a public meeting like this, and, and we couldn't, we couldn't make a decision here on Lake Forest without having advertised it, but, but you brought it up, and, and so we can address it here publicly. What's before us is a sketch plan, and the sketch plan does, it sets broad parameters, but it doesn't get into the nitty-gritty about what every, what all the use of all the public space and amenities can be or where they can be. It, it's sort of, it, we're starting to get closer to that, but we're not zeroing in quite on that yet, but this is a good time because once the sketch plan, assuming it hasn't even come before us, we haven't had a public hearing on it, but assuming that it does come before us, and, and if it does pass, then the next step for the developer will be a schematic development plan, and at that point, they're gonna get into the nitty-gritty. And so it's a good, it's a good time for our staff to be aware of this request, and it's a good time for the developer to be aware of it, so that as they look past it to the next part of this process, they might be able to think about how they might incorporate some of that. I'm not sure where we are, you know, what, what they're thinking on, what they're thinking is currently on amenities, but I, I certainly, I love the idea of a, of a new venue, I love the idea of art as, in public places as part of the Lake Forest redevelopment, and so to, if they happen to be aware of it, Tanisha, maybe you can convey through staff that, that, you know, we, these are ideas that we like, and it, it would be nice if the developer would consider things like that, that would be great. I'm gonna end with the same question that I asked Anita, and then I'll turn over to the, to the council. How can we better help you guys out in what you're doing?
Well, the, the support that you give us is fantastic, and keeping these recommendations or these requests in mind and bringing them up is fantastic. What I, what I love about what is coming to Gaithersburg within the next, say, five years, ten years, is all this public art that we are just on the crest of, and to see that, you know, knowing that Lake Forest is the, the last real undeveloped land in Gaithersburg, to, to see that really become a center for the city would be wonderful. And, and I, I would love to see that.
Okay. We'll keep in touch. I also want to recognize Nancy Wild, who's here in, who is in charge of our community museum, which is a jewel in our community. Thank you for being here, Nancy. Who'd like to go? We'll go with you first, and then you, and then we'll go to this side.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. John, thank you for the presentation. Shelley, Nancy, Linda, thank you all for the work that you do. I've been able to attend a number of the meetings this year as the liaison from the council, and, you know, all of this public work, all this public art that is coming is in no small part due to the, the work of the committee and the staff. You know, it has been, you know, years in the making, a lot of these projects, and it is very exciting to see them coming to fruition, and, and, you know, the, the proactivity that the committee takes, reaching out to developers in not being afraid to say, can we, can we rethink that, I think is really important. You know, it's not just advising on these, I mean, the fact that, that together with staff, you know, going out and finding these grants and actually having the money to do these things is, is incredibly important. Involving our children and our youth and getting them excited about the arts and getting them involved in these projects and having them being able to point to something tangible. There's so much work, you know, I'm glad that STEM is becoming STEAM and getting that A in there with the arts. As someone with a, a first-year design student, it's incredibly important to, to be espousing that this is a viable career, it's something that's important, and to the mayor's point, and, and you brought it up, John, that this really does reflect who we are. All of these projects reflect who we are, and there's wonderful opportunities for that cross-promotion with our Cultural Affairs Committee and those kinds of things. So, with all the things that are happening, and your continued advocacy bringing up Lake Forest is incredibly important, you know, you need to be that voice for the, the arts in the community as these things happen. We need to be hearing that, it's not just the economic development portion. We do need to hear this, it's in the Master Plan, so thank you for bringing that up in this discussion, and we'll certainly keep that in mind. You know, I just want to say, please, you know, keep up the great work, thank, you know, keep looking for opportunities, keep asking questions, and, you know, help us, you know, let us know what we can do to get the publicized events or looking for opportunities. I know we've talked about other things in Old Town with, you know, additional mural possibilities, the museums, et cetera, so thank you, and I really do appreciate the opportunity to work with you all on the committee.
Thanks, Jeff. We'll go to Lisa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. John and Shelley, thank you for this presentation. John, it would be great if you orated all of our meetings. That would be fantastic. There's a, a feeling for me, and I think for others as well, of Gaithersburg. You feel a certain way when you're in the city, and this committee has done the awesome job of visualizing that feeling. You can't do this level of work unless you love it. So, thank you for your work, thank you for the love of doing this work, it shows through. This is fantastic, and congratulations on what you've done. I can't wait to see what's coming before us, and thank you for the courage and, and wherewithal of bringing up Lake Forest Mall. I have lots of wishes, and, and more than wishes, so, so I look forward to, to that going forward, so thank you for bringing that forward this evening. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thanks, Lisa. We'll go to Neil.
All right, so thanks for the presentation. As, as Lisa said, the oration is great, you maybe should consider being in showbiz. I'm really excited to see some of the new public art, the, especially the trail markers. I think that's a great project, and as somebody who's been avid user of the trails in the city, I'd love to see that, you know, the first pass, and then we have lots of other trails, so I'm looking forward to more, more markers. I don't know if it's possible, but there, as you go along the Muddy Branch Trail under Great Seneca Highway, there's an underpass that has already been decorated with art, but it's probably not the art that we're looking for. I don't know if that's a good spot, or if it just would be defaced, but it might be worth, something worth considering. The Father Cuddy Bridge Underpass, is that art designed for people going by, going through it on the train, or is it gonna be visible elsewhere?
Well, going through on the train as well as in cars or walking, it's on the, if I can do this in my head, it's on the north side, it's on the La Casita side of the, of the road.
So it'll be visible from Diamond?
Is that Diamond, or is that, yes, Diamond, yes. Sorry, get Russell and Diamond confused right there where they turn. Yeah, so as you're going down Diamond, and La Casita's on your right, just as you go under the underpass, it'll, the idea is that there will be six panels, they don't actually want us to paint on the wall, six panels mounted to the wall, and that way, when something bad happens, like graffiti, or, you know, we need to clean them, they're easy to take off, clean them, and even repaint them in, in five or six years, because we will be a different community in five or six years, we'll be, there'll be something different about us.
All right, that's great, and the, you know, the, the idea of the Metan project getting public art with direction from you folks is absolutely fantastic. And the maintenance project for the, for the art that exists is really, is something I wouldn't have thought of offhand, but clearly something that is gonna help preserve our cultural heritage in the city. Quick question, is there a map of all the public art that we're responsible for in the city? Where would I find it?
If you go, if you put in Arts in Public Places and go to that page, which is under Recreation slash Visual Arts, you can see it there, but it really lives in the GIS Map Gallery, that's where the, its home is, but it's, it's on that page for Visual Arts. I can send you the link.
No, it's okay, I know where that page is, I'll go take a look.
Yeah, I don't like the, that, that map, the story map, I don't think it does a good job, but that's, that's for another grant for our amazing grant writer, Linda Bloom.
All right, sounds great, because I'd love to do a tour. I know I've seen a lot of the art, but I'm sure there's stuff out there that I haven't stumbled across.
There's stuff out there that we didn't know about, there are monuments that we didn't know about.
Okay.
So, you know, we're learning a lot.
Sounds great, thank you again. Thanks for all the good work.
Okay, Rob.
It's good to get an inventory. John, thank you for the presentation. Shelley, thanks for everything you do. Ditto to everything that everyone said, just want to add, I appreciated, John, when you reached out on, on the Spectrum project, and, you know, kept us honest on that one, keeping us focused and keeping staff focused. You know, since I've been on the council, I've been talking about, you know, can we find pathways to empower our committees, to make it something more than just meetings of, of people, to actually get the committees involved in, you know, what I see as their true purpose is, is coming up with ideas and advising staff and advising council as community representatives on their, you know, their areas of specialty, the areas of the charter. And so, you know, I, I appreciate all that you've done thus far, and, and, you know, to you and your committee, I commend you to, you know, feel empowered, to bring ideas forward, because I think, you know, on the Spectrum thing, we had the discussion regarding, you know, can we consider, are you public testimony? No, you're actually an advisory committee to, to the council, and so, in that regard, you're an extension of us, and so, thank you for all that you do, and keep up the good work.
Thank you, and if I could just add, since your meeting with Spectrum, Linda Bloom and I have met with the developers there, and it was a very positive experience, and we're really looking forward to working together with them on that, and thank you to the council for recommending that.
That is excellent news. Neil.
Sorry, there's one more thing that I forgot regarding Lake Forest, is, I know most of us have met with the developer of Lake Forest, and I know that-
Before they submitted.
Before they submitted. Thank you, Your Honor. And I, they, when I had that conversation with them, they brought up the fact that we were asking for, you know, civic amenities, but I don't think they know how to do that or what to do, so we're gonna need to really hold their hand and guide them and show them how to make it possible, because it's, I mean, they're, you know, real estate developer that's primarily focused on retail, this is something new to them, so whatever help we can give them, whatever advice or consultants we can point in their direction would, I think, be very helpful.
I'm, I'm happy to help in any way as well, and during our last C A A C meeting, one of our members reached out to incoming county council member, a former city council member, Lori Anne Sales, who also offered as much support as she can give on the county level, so perhaps there's something that we can further discuss there.
Like county money.
Yeah.
Not to put too fine a point on it. Okay, so is there any, this is the time we'll take any testimony, if anyone has any questions or comments they'd like to add here. Go on once, go twice, okay, let me just look on Zoom, if, I don't even see anybody on Zoom anymore, okay. Thank you all so much, appreciate the presentation, and now we're gonna move on to G Park and invite our good friend Mary Phailig to the table.
I want us to follow John, that's the topic.
I, yeah.
You got this, Mary.
But we could invite him just to do all of our presentations.
So, hello, everyone. Good evening.
Welcome.
Mayor Ashman and council members, and as well as Miss Bryle and Mr. Johnson. My name is Mary Phailig, and I am, Gaithersburg has been my, has been my home since nineteen ninety-six. I serve as the Chair of the Governing Board of the Gaithersburgs Parks, Arts, and Recreation Corporation. We call it G Park. I've been a member of this board since inception in twenty eighteen, but I was also on its earlier form, which we refer to as GAMPIC. And so I'm glad to be here tonight to talk about what we've accomplished and the activities of G Park. So, G Park is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, and our mission is to support new and mature parks, arts and culture, and recreation initiatives in the city of Gaithersburg. G Park engages public and private partnerships to promote awareness of the city's resources, and it raises resources for these initiatives, from volunteers to business sponsors to funds by, you know, dollars, by fundraising. So, G Park is led by a governing board that advises three special interest groups called alliances. Each alliance includes one or more governing board members. In twenty twenty-two, our nine-person board included Richard Stang of DeLeon and Stang CPAs, who is the G Park Treasurer, Bridget Ryder is our Vice Chair and Chair of the Communications Subcommittee, and then the three alliance chairs are Denise Kaiser, Chair of the Alliance for Arts and Culture, Karen Metzen, the newly-elected Chair of the Alliance for Recreation, and Tracy Rouleau, who's the Chair of the Alliance for the Parks. Our at-large members are Oscar Alvaranga, as an at-large member, Stuart Barr, he's the Chair of the Nomination Subcommittee, and Mike Kacoris, who's, who's come to us from AstroZenica. The G Park board members bring a wealth of business, education, community building, nonprofit management, and volunteerism expertise to our conversations. So what does G Park do? So, of course, Gaithersburg is a great city, and G Park is a separate organization that explores ways that the community can enhance their quality of life by connecting through parks, arts, and recreation. There are programs, partnerships, and actually, it's an open canvas. They bring their passion to join us. G Park grows capacity through volunteerism, through partnerships, through fundraising. G Park enhances civic participation by inviting community members to get involved at a grassroots level. G Park streamlines efforts by making connections and developing collaborations, and G Park sustains resources by stimulating interest in the city and its programs, facilities, parks, and opportunities. Everything we do is guided by the Parks, Recreation, and Culture element of the city's Master Plan. This past year, G Park board and alliances have grew stronger and served the community with some exciting programs through creative collaboration amongst three alliances. G Park connected more broadly with the city, especially with the Parks, Recreation, and Culture Departments and other departments outside the PRC. G Park expanded community partnerships to mobilize individuals, businesses, and nonprofits around important projects that impact the city. G Park is made up of the three alliances, although each has its own purpose, this past year, the alliance collaborated in ways that helped build community and support the city's resources. So two examples of this include initiating the first annual photo contest on G Park's social media channel to illustrate the connection between parks, recreation, and arts and culture. Winners were selected by a panel of jurors comprised of local artists, members of G Park, and members of the City Public Information Office. The response to this contest was exciting, and we're gonna do it again in twenty twenty-three. Another great collaboration was the Art of Trash Grabbing, a collaboration between the Parks and, the Parks Alliance and the Arts and Culture Alliance. G Park received a thousand-dollar grant from Keep America Beautiful, Keep Maryland Beautiful to produce three artist-led community workshops to encourage creativity and environmental stewardship. These workshops were all held on the same Saturday morning in August at Griffith Park, Morris Park, and Lakeland's Park. Workshop attendees decorated metal trash grabbers with colorful tape and environmental messages. Following the art workshops, the participants joined a park cleanup and put those trash grabbers to work. So the external collaboration, the alliance has collaborated this year with other city departments and the PRC to enhance program opportunities for residents of and visitors to the city. This fall, the Arts and Alliance, the Arts and Culture Alliance partnered again with the city's Stormwater Management Program, Public Works, and the Youth Centers to coordinate the second annual Paint the Snow Plow program. The Youth Centers created four new snow plows, created four new snow plows to add to the city's fleet. Messages focused on safe driving during snow conditions and the impact of oversaltine on the environment. Messages focused on safe driving during snow conditions and the impact of over-saltine on the environment. In the spring of 2022, the Arts and Culture Alliance and the city's Stormwater Management Program hosted the Second Annual Storm Drain Art Contest and Mural Painting Day. Artists from the ages 11 to 30 and their friends and family painted murals on five storm drains in Old Town to bring attention to the importance of protecting the Chesapeake Bay watershed. The Alliance for Recreation partnered with the Recreation Services to host the Move with the Mayor program last spring to promote healthy living through step-trucking and community fitness activities. Over the last year, the alliances have expanded their outreach by participating in city events and reaching out to other groups and events. G Park participated with the Moco Epic, an epic bike ride that covered over 70 miles of trails through Montgomery County. G Park had a table with cookies and bananas and refueled many of the bikers. The Parks Alliance partnered with groups like Victory Farms, Neighborhood for a Park Cleanup, and the Arts and Cultural Alliance partnered with private senior facility, the Carnegie at Washingtonian, on a shared art exhibit that will be held at Carnegie's Discovery Center in Crown and then at a city gallery. So, after two years of virtual and social distancing, the members of G Park were excited to plan a meet and greet with you all, with the mayor and city council. We got to meet with you all, exchange ideas, and share the visions for Gaithersburg. This exchange built excitement for an in-Gaithersburg article and opened the doors for additional awareness opportunities, including spots on DC News Now and ABC 7 News on Your Side. We held a communications retreat where members identified branded materials, launched an e-communications plant, and worked with Wordsmith elevator speeches to better explain G Park and spark interest in projects, membership, and fundraising. Our financial accomplishments include collecting nearly $34,533 in donations and fundraising efforts. We are receiving $3,000 in grants, including the Art of Trash Grabbing Grant mentioned earlier, and $2,000 to the museum to explore public art installations that could serve astronomy education purposes in the Latitude Observatory, dispersing six scholarships for youth campers at the Arts Barn and adults enrolled in the Gaithersburg Chorus. The Arts Barn and the Chorus are two friends groups. Launching a fundraising portal through PayPal and an Amazon Smile account. G Park has received $1,861 in donations through PayPal, which, $1,573 was dedicated to the book festival. And we are producing a full annual report in September. We produced in September that was submitted to the city finance director in anticipation of the city's audit. Looking forward, the board and alliances have mapped out an exciting year and ramping up, let me see here.
Slide 12. Page eight.
I lost eight. Some highlights in 23 for the parks, I think. Will be continued. We're going to be focusing on Explore Gaithersburg, which is the initiative that raises community awareness of the city parks and promotes exploration and enjoyment. Also, this is, we're focusing on what the parks is doing, the Alliance for the Parks. They're going to be collaborating with the Arts and Cultural Alliance and the City Arts and Public Prices Program on the second installment of the Artist-Made Trail Marker Project. We'll be encouraging environmental stewardship and support of the programs to adopt a park and keep it clean, and we're strengthening the Explore Gaithersburg Park Passport, which premiered in 2022. The passport will identify all the city parks and encourage people to utilize many of the amenities. The passport will include a contest encouraging people to visit parks to receive a prize. The Alliance for Arts and Culture will maintain current programs by creating new opportunities for arts and cultural development and facilitating creativity among artists and non-artists. A few highlights include continuing the arts and environment programs with the Parks Alliance and the city's Stormwater Management Team, facilitating artist meetups to explore and capture the beauty of the city's parks and scenic areas, and ramping up a new literacy program, Arts in the Written Word, which will feature artists decorated little free libraries in equity access areas of the city. The library on the scheme was installed in Morris Park. The volunteers are seeking groups to adopt a library and keep it stocked with age-appropriate multilingual books. The Alliance for Recreation will continue to explore opportunities that encourage the community to get outside and exercise, such as the popular Move with the Mayor program. And new this year will be plogging events in conjunction with the Alliance for Parks. Plogging is a trash cleanup, is a trail trash cleanup, less jogging or walking. Working with Alliance for Parks and the members of the Gaithers Center to develop outdoor exercise programs to enhance senior health and well-being, and grow friends groups to include programs featuring nutritional experts and cooking demonstrations in connection with the city's farmers markets. So, in closing, G Park has the following goals for 2023. We're really building out our alliances and our board. We want to expand our community and business partnerships to support programs financially and to mobilize the community. We want to pursue creative fundraising opportunities using social media and outreach. We're establishing a dedicated G Park website, and we're really making equity a priority in both the board and the alliance membership. We're going to be sharing our expertise through speaking opportunities with other municipalities, how we've been developing, what we've been doing through speaking opportunities with other municipalities, community group businesses, corporations, nonprofits. But thank you for your attention. We are having fun with all this and excited about what's possible. And I guess my ask would be, similar to others, is when you meet with people that want to connect their passion, their passion for the arts, or for the parks, or for the recreation, that you send them our way. Send them to me. I really want to share with them the benefits that there are so many at the city and how, it's just the benefit of actually plugging in and being a part of creating this wonderful quality of life. So, thank you. Questions?
So, when you say that, Mary, you're saying you want to form like a membership, but not necessarily more new members of the board?
No, we're both, but I'm more, at this point, we've got so many programs going on. We want to start getting people to come to, I gave my phone.
To Anita.
We need to be connected. We want to, we certainly, because we've got so many programs going, we're going to have to expand the board with more support in terms of volunteer engagement, fundraising, et cetera. So, we're going to, because, so we do, we're looking for some specific expertise for the board. But then also, we've got these programs, and we want to start getting people, kind of the whole idea is to engage the volunteers, the community, and their passion, and find out how they can plug in, you know. As we say, it's an empty campus. This is their place to-
Yeah.
To dream. So, and I do think, listening to everybody, the two previous presentations is, I think we're now positioned to kind of really collaborate and be a resource.
That's great. So, when you identify a specific need for a certain talent on the board or something like that, please let us know because we can put it out to our networks and perhaps help.
Thank you.
So, I want to say thanks to you for taking this leadership position, continuing to take this leadership position, I should say, and for forming this board, which is really impressive in terms of how it's structured and the talent that's part of that board. It's really, it's really good. I am very happy to participate in Move with the Mayor, promoting healthy living. I will just say in full disclosure, I don't always practice healthy living, but it's a fun, it's a really fun program. And I will continue doing it as long as, as long as it's desired that I do. They don't take one look at me and say, oh, no, he's not promoting healthy living. So, let me turn it to council members, if anybody like wants to say anything. Rob, go ahead.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Mary, for the presentation and all the work that you and your colleagues are doing. You know, I'm very excited about G Park, and I think I've said this before many times, is that, you know, I view G Park's role as kind of the engine that drives all of the other great things. You know, the city can tap the public fisc, but it really is able to, hopefully, as things grow, you know, synergize with the G Park and its fundraising capabilities and its expertise. And so, it's great to hear that, you know, you've got the cards from folks on other committees so that you can, you know, just work with them to support their mission, and they can support your mission. I was going to make a joke on, you know, packet page 41. I didn't see the mayor in the Move with the Mayor brochure, so I wasn't sure he actually moved. But then I guess there's a later packet page 48 where he did one lap, which is great. Actually, I see the mayor walking all the time, and sometimes pretty far afield from where he actually lives. So, I know he's doing more healthy living than he's espousing. I would ask, and this may be a frank question, is, you know, are there ways for the city, whether it's through publicity, it's through a fundraising drive, you know, a sustained effort to try to fill the coffers of G Park? You know, a matching drive, you know, can the city say, you know, we'll put $100,000 into G Park's coffers in match of $100,000 raised, just to, I'm getting a no from Tanisha.
Yes, we'll do. We're going to get a yes from me.
Thinking about ways that, yeah, no, the city, to utilize the city's resources to help augment the mission of G Park, get the word out there, get the ball rolling on fundraising, things like that.
Well, I literally wrote down here that also, just thinking about us is like that. You know, we are just starting. Thank you. We've got some new grant opportunities that we're pursuing. And so, that's, and I would say, it's alliance is also thinking about that. Where can we be going after, you know, where are other grants available to us? So, while I say, when you think about us, when you're thinking about people, you know, that we can be plugging in, think about that, us in terms of, we're a fundraiser, you know, we are a nonprofit vehicle that, one, on our own, but then also, if we can demonstrate partnership with the city, which is, you know, a wonderful, unique identifier for us. So, and I think we're in a great position now to really start pursuing those.
Do we want to put like one of those G Park thermometers where you raise the red level with the more money?
Shall we send you all on our Amazon Smile and make sure you sign up? We're all signed up for that. But no, I think that there are some significant grants that we're starting to go after, both, I think, the arts alliance has been as well as the parks.
Thanks, Rob. Neil.
So, quick question. How many new board members are you looking for? Do you have a number in mind?
I'm going to say about four. And I can, I will do what Mayor Ashman recommended. We have a matrix of the skills we need, and I'll send that to you and all of you if you'd like. And if somebody comes to mind, that'd be fabulous.
Yeah, we know people.
I know. Great.
Yeah, and I love the idea of, I don't remember what you called it, but the map to all the parks in a contest to go visit all of them. I think that's absolutely terrific. And we have so many parks in the city, and many of them are unique and have their own special flavor that people should know about them, and not just do the ones that are walking distance from their house, but explore the city a little bit more. So, many great projects. I'm not going to go into all of them, but I'm really very impressed and looking forward to seeing more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go to Lisa.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary, for the presentation. This is, this is a lot. It's a lot of goodness, but, so congratulations on the work, all the work that you guys do. I have a small question and a big question. I'll ask the big one first. Maybe it is. Can you explain the adopt a park and how that works?
Well, we're in a little, we're going to, it's a little fluid in that we don't want to be too prescriptive. But the idea is that somebody would either, a business, or actually, we've talked about going to homeowners association, and I've been approaching some churches that they have, that are within a proximity of a park, and they would adopt it. So, what does that mean? That means kind of being the stewards in terms of tell us, tell the city, tell us what's needed, tell us, you know. But it's also about how do we engage them in utilizing the park and inviting other peoples, and other people into that park, using it for entertainment, using it for community. So, it's adopting in terms of stewardship, but also in terms of utilization.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I'll look forward to seeing that grow.
And that's another thing. We're thinking, how do we get, you know, is it businesses? You know, that's off the road model. We've talked about the homeowners association and doing presenting there, but I think after tonight, if we do, if we get in front of homeowners associations, we should talk about some of the other things we heard tonight. But then, as I said, I've been talking to a couple of churches because I think that might be an interesting community of people.
Is there a fear of it maybe getting territorial? I've adopted this park and it's mine.
I guess we aspire.
Maybe that's just me that thinks that way. I adopted it.
I'd love, let's have that problem and then we'll figure it out.
My other question is for all the committees, is there a concern of, or could there be conflicting when going for grants? Is there a possibility that you will all go for the same grant or grants?
Lisa, I don't think so because Amanda, Linda, and I write the grants, and we talk.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yeah. Now, if we went to, if somebody went and talked to Dave Cristal at the city to write those grants, but he would be writing it from the city. We are writing some as city, but sometimes we're writing them from G Park as well. But I think we're going to be okay.
Okay. All right. Because it came, the thought came when you and Anita had exchanged business cards, which is great. And I see, you know, both committees seeking grants, and I didn't know if you were going after the same dollars.
I don't think multicultural affairs is going for grants, are they?
No, we'd like to be that person. We would like to be that vehicle to bring them money. It's really.
Then the cultural advisory committee. Okay.
Cultural arts, maybe, yeah.
Cultural arts. Okay.
But again, I'm the centralized person between these two committees, and so I kind of know what people are doing.
All right. Fantastic. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to Jim.
Thank you, Ms. Mary. I too love the park passport idea. I had written that down in my notes. My kids, we would have one of the U.S. National Parks passport, and of course, we'd always forget to bring it with us. So, that got me thinking. Is this going to be a printed passport? Or is there some kind of like a GIS map or something that you can check in with, just something to think about on that end? Because, yeah, I always forget to bring it with us. We're like, we've come all this way, and we don't have our passport.
We'll probably want a way that you have to come back to our website.
Yes, there you go. That would be good. And tomorrow is Giving Tuesday. So, for people who don't know how Amazon Smiles work, you can identify a charity, and you put it in there. And anything that you're buying on Amazon, Amazon will take a portion of that and send it to your charity. So, it's no extra money out of your pocket. We used to do that for my kid's school. So, if you're looking for a charity, that would be certainly something, and we can share that on our social media, if that's something people would be interested in doing. But I too, Mary, thank you. It's always good to see you. Appreciate all the work. I agree with the mayor. It's kind of an all-star team on your board, and we're happy to try and put the call out for other folks to continue to build that brain trust and help really get G Park, you know, moving and really fulfilling its mission. I know that's all I have. I think everybody else pretty much covered it. Although I do want to adopt Rob's cookies.
I was going to say, when you were asking, I absolutely will give the request for the board members, but it's people. It's people, you know, I've been working, talking a lot with Oscar about, you know, how do we get the new residents or people, you know, just to come to one event, just to start to touch base and have us be, you know, have the G Park be the playway that people can connect in. You know, you don't, you know, we're not asking somebody to sign up for a big commitment on a committee or anything. We're just asking them just to, you know, to tip their toes in and get started. So. And then also, we're working a lot with Mike Kacoris over at G Park, I mean, I'm sorry, over at AstraZeneca, about how do we start getting, you know, really be thoughtful about starting to get the people that come here to work to start connecting in. So, it's for a one event, and as well as board leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody who'd like to add anything here or with a comment or a question? If not, let me just check on Zoom. There is nobody on Zoom. Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much for all you're doing, for the presentation, and thanks to everyone who presented tonight. Really appreciate everybody's work. I will note, everything good?
I wanted to add something.
Add something, please.
We have 12 advisory committees that serve Gaithersburg. The committees were given an option to either do an in-person presentation or memos. And I just wanted to bring to the mayor's and the council's attention that those memos, there's four that selected-
there's four that selected to present, to provide memos and they're in tonight's packet.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, Doris. Yeah, I noticed those memos in the packet. So council members, make sure you read those memos. Okay? I'm going to test you on this.
OTAC's one of them, I've already-
Okay, there you go. So I will note that our next regular meeting of mayor and council is next Monday, December Until then, Go Quince Orchard on Thursday night. Please join us at Jingle Jubilee from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM right here at City Hall, at the Pavilion. It's a lovely little event and I just, I feel like anybody who goes there just cannot help but be charmed. And I will remind everybody that we also have winter lights going on. So please go enjoy that and get your tickets online because you can't get your tickets there. It has to be online in advance. Until next time, let's do great things, Gaithersburg. We are adjourned.